And Mike Goddard, so it's six o'clock, so let's, uh, let's call the meeting to order. And we're going to dispense with, um, with the pledge, but I want to ask Laura, our admin, to read the ground rules that you sent to me. Would you like to read them, Laura?
I was going to read the remote. Am I echoing?
No, you're fine.
Okay, I was, I typically read the, the remote introduction and then you would do the ground rules, but I can do that, too.
It's no, that's fine. Go ahead and do what you need to do. And I have them right here, so.
Very good. Here we go. This open meeting of the Mendon Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's updated guidance on holding meetings pursuant to the Act extending certain COVID nineteen measures that was signed into law on June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. This act includes an extension until December fifteenth, twenty twenty three, of the remote meeting provisions of his March twelfth, twenty twenty executive order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. For this meeting, the Mendon Select Board is convening by video telephone conference, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting will feature public comment. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if I can just cover the ground rules, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. I ask that you hold off until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. And if members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. I hope we can all remember that. For, for items with public comment, I ask that after members have spoken, I'll afford public comment by asking any members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by their name and address. And then, once I have a list of everybody, I'll call them by name, give them three minutes apiece, and then, after, finally, after each vote is taken in this meeting, we'll conduct it by a roll call vote. So, at that point, are there any, anybody, any citizen statement or petitions that anybody wants to make? All right, so then if you would all look at the agenda. When we start with the three A, it says, uh, consider placement of signs for St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair. And this is a letter addressed to us from Pat Gelli that says, I'm asking permission to place signs advertising St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair on the islands at the following locations, at Route sixteen and Millville Street, Main Street and Route sixteen and North Ave at North Bridge Road. He said that, she says, the fair will be held on Saturday, December third, twenty twenty two. The signs are eighteen inches by twenty four inches and will be placed three weeks prior to the event and removed on December fourth, twenty twenty you, twenty twenty two. And she says, she thanks us for considering the request. So if nobody has any questions, I just would look for a motion.
Move to approve the placement of signs advertising St. Gabriel's Christmas Fair to be held on Saturday, December third, twenty twenty two, in the islands at the following locations, Millville Road, Route sixteen, Main Street, Route sixteen, North Ave and North Bridge. The signs measure eight by twenty, eighteen by twenty four and will be placed three weeks prior to the event and removed on December fourth, twenty twenty two.
Second?
Chanel second.
Roll call vote, everybody in favor, Morali, aye?
Tenio, aye.
Ruggos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
It's unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you.
B is, uh, consider toys for Tots Mountain Bike Ride. This is, uh, my name is Bill DeCai. I'm a trail steward at the Town Forest and also a member of the Leadership Board for the Blackstone Valley Chapter of the New England Mountain Bike Association. We're planning on holding a Toys for Tots Mountain Bike Ride based out of the Southwick Zoo and using some trails in the town forest on Sunday, November twentieth. The collected toys will be distributed by the Marines Toys for Tots Program. I'd like to be placed, I'd like to be placed on this agenda to seek the board's approval. And it's signed, Bill DeCai. So I'll be looking for a motion.
Move to authorize the New England Mountain Bike Association to hold Toys for Tots Mountain Bike Ride using some trails in the town forest on Sunday, November twenty, twenty twenty two.
I have a second?
Second.
Chanel, second.
Take Elena, beat you to it. All right.
I think so.
Roll call vote, all those in favor, Morali, aye?
Tenio, aye.
Ruggos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
All right. Um, thank you very much. We're gonna, uh, skip over three C for the moment and merge that with, uh, item four in the agenda. So, we look at the, uh, item three D, it talks about, uh, means tested senior citizen property tax exemption. And I just wanted to, uh, just start off by talking about a, an email that was received a few weeks ago from Brian Murray, uh, our state representative that says, I'm pleased to advise that this morning Governor Baker signed H thirty nine oh one, an act authorizing the town of Mendon to establish a means tested senior citizen property tax exemption. The signed and chapter parchment is a tax attached. Thank you for your assistance in putting this bill forward. And if there's anything further you may need in this regard, please let me know. And this was addressed to Elena, and Kim, and Kevin Redden. So with that, Elena, do you want, have anything you want to say?
Oh, I, uh, so, first of all, I'm, I'm thrilled that this has, uh, been passed through the legislature and signed by the governor. So it was, um, a long time coming. But, uh, Kevin Redden wanted to present some details about that, and I don't see him on the meeting. I don't, I know that he was planning to attend, so. Don't see him.
Well, can you give us, just give a thumbnail sketch of exactly what it is?
So, uh, the means tested exemption is for senior citizens. Uh, we proposed it in, um, before the May twenty twenty one, uh, annual town meeting. Um, and it passed at the meeting and then was sent to the legislation. And what, what it will do is, um, give a, give senior citizen residents, homeowners in Mendon, um, an additional, the opportunity to, uh, get an additional exemption. Uh, it will be based on whether they qualify for the, uh, state circuit breaker, refund, I believe it is. And so if, if the homeowners who are senior citizens qualify for the circuit breaker, they would then, uh, be eligible for an additional exemption on their property taxes. So I don't, uh, Kevin was gonna walk us through the nuts and bolts of how it will work out. I, I know he has some slides and probably spreadsheets prepared. So hopefully we can return to this at some point when he is here. I can answer some questions, but I don't have as many details.
Right. And any of the members of the board have any questions? Right. I see Matt O'Brien, you have your hand up.
I do, if I may say a couple of words on this. So actually, I worked in the legislature. I worked for the state representative from Ton and Easton. Um, so this individual piece of legislation, uh, was fairly non controversial because it was a, um, you know, a local, a local piece of legislation. Uh, those are typically passed, you know, uh, with a voice vote, uh, nothing, nothing too crazy there. But I will say this is an excellent opportunity for the town because there were a number of pieces of legislation that we were looking at earlier in the session uh, to expand eligibility for the senior circuit, uh, circuit breaker tax exemption. Uh, and they didn't make it through. So I just wanted to jump on and say that this is an excellent opportunity and it's gonna help a lot of people.
All right. Well, thanks very much. If this, if there's nothing else, I guess we'll move on to the three E, but thank you all very much. So three E says, consider letter of support for Regional Housing Coordinator Grant. And I have received an application to, to sign as the chair, but, um, CMR PC, which, uh, which is Central Mass Regional Planning Committee, is working to hire a full-time regional housing coordinator who would serve multiple towns and could work on Mendon projects for four hours a week. This would be instead of Mendon's Affordable Housing Coordinator. The funding would come from the CPA. Uh, this could be very beneficial to Mendon since we can't afford or don't need a full-time person to help Mendon with affordable housing. Uh, Bill McHenry is not in this position any longer, and it would be difficult to find a person who is qualified and willing to work only four hours a week. But four hours a week should be sufficient time for Mendon at this point. Uh, this letter would support the grant proposal the CMR PC is writing to pay for the first year of the, uh, of the proposal, of the position. Uh, this would be a good way for Mendon to test out the part-time position and save the town money for the first year. Um, this is not a commitment, but in support of, uh, CMR PC for their grant. So again, I believe that there is a, a letter for me to sign. I'm looking at the, uh, we're looking for a motion of, yeah, so I'm looking here for a motion of support from the whole board.
I moved to support efforts being made by CMR PC to establish position of the, a regional housing coordinator.
Yvonne, he made it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Goddard, second? All those in favor, Morali, aye? I'm sorry.
Hi. So my, my question is, if we are going to be joining CMR PC in a joint position, are we going to be paying that position the same twenty thousand dollar allotment for the two hundred and eight hours we'll get per year?
Um, they're still working on what that would be, and, um, we haven't committed to anything. They're still trying to work out the details on that. So, but.
So it would be twenty thousand or less from the community preservation funds. Okay, so the hourly rate in the terms in the hiring will be done by CMR PC? Or will it be done, um, through the communities that the position is gonna work for?
The communities will be involved, and if we don't like it, we don't have to sign up for it. So we'll be totally involved.
But my understanding is this letter is only to, to support CMR PC to apply for the grant, right?
Yes.
So we're not committing to anything else except just supporting the grant applications, right? All right. So, Ken, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mike?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. I, I just reiterate, uh, what you just said was this is a support to, to explore it, which I think makes sense. But I do think when we look at this, that, you know, we might have some homework to do within the town to say, well, what are we asking this resource to do? Are there other ways, other resources that could do it? But it does feel like it's very much in line with the way we went about sharing a, a town planner, Kim, right? Similar, similar idea. Um, but I do think we should kind of have a takeaway here to work, you know, and we've talked about it with, uh, CPC to say, what are the specific objectives or deliverables this resource is going to drive? And then, you know, Kim, are there other places, other roles, as you're looking at the overall operational structure, that these could actually be done by an existing resources? I mean, because ultimately, it's the same amount of money, but it's still money, right? That, that we may or may not need to expend. But just, just with that, I'm, I'm, from my standpoint, I'm actually in support of moving forward with this, even at least for the first year, and see where we can take it and what we can make it.
And again, just to reiterate, this is something that, uh, our CPC monies have been paying for in previous years. But the idea is instead of us doing it on our own for twenty hours a week, we're just going to, like a lot of other things we've been doing, uh, regionalize and work with the other communities around us and, and a grant to pay for, for at least some of that, right? So, uh, the motion was made and seconded, and I, I started the roll call vote with saying, saying, uh, that I vote aye.
Tenio, aye.
Ruggos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Right, for, uh, for article, for, uh, item four in the agenda talks about, uh, discuss town council, a special council for ZBA and, um, this correspondence, uh, back in three C, you look at your agenda, um, also kind of dovetails into this. Do you want me to read this email, Cindy, or do you want to just, uh, go over it?
Mike, Brendan has his hand up real quick.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. What? Okay, sorry, Brendan. Go ahead.
Oh, that, that's fine. Thank you for calling on me. Um, just before we start this, I'm going to be, uh, recusing myself from discussion on these two topics as, and I'm, I'm in butter for this project that's being discussed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So Cindy, do you have this? Well, I guess why don't I, why don't I read this email that, because it was put in the packet? Um, it was addressed, it was, it's just a letter, um, and it's signed by John Nennart. And it says, Kim, we've had a rash of members that need to reclusive themselves from our meetings either because their companies may do work for us, sell us goods, or on more, or, or are on more than one board. I fully understand why town council had John Van Nistelz reclusive himself, but I, I think he means recuse himself. Um, recuse himself from the ZBA, and though I may not totally agree with her decision, I accept it. However, I am a bit perplexed why town council told me, uh, that he, John, needed not to speak about the project and to leave the room because Peter Coffin, on the other hand, re-cuses himself and then stays in the room and harasses me during entire conservation meetings. He drags out every item, no matter how small, and creates a disruption to not only the applicant, but the board as well. What is the town's protocol for board members in that situation? I don't see how it applies to one, but not the other. My lawyer said that the mass attorney general feels board members, if they recuse themselves, lose the right to speak about the project at the meeting and recommends that they leave the room. Could you please get me a clarification on the matter? I'm coming to you before I take the matter further with our council or the ethics board. I look forward to hearing from you. Shouldn't the town have a policy in place for this? So that is, so that is fair on both the applicant and town's side. And again, it's signed John Nennart. But my understanding is Cindy Amara, town council, um, answered that. I'll let her take it from here. And also, if you can just discuss, uh, item four on our, uh, agenda, which also talks about your, your position as a special counsel for the ZBA. Cindy, thanks. And you're, uh, you're still muted, so.
I'll get it one of these days. Um, on November first, I sent a response to Kim, and she forwarded it to all of you in response to this letter. And basically, John recused himself because the planning board voted affirmatively to support the project before the ZBA to prevent any appearance of conflict, if not an actual conflict. John recused himself because it's hard to imagine how he could affirmatively vote to support the project before the ZBA and then sit on the ZBA impartially. The law does not require that an individual leave the room once he or she has recused themselves, but it is customary to do so. Also, I'm just scrolling down here. Once a member has recused himself from acting on a matter, he may speak on a matter as an individual, as long as he clearly identifies himself as an individual and not as a member of the board, if he chooses. I did not tell John that he had to leave the room, only that he had to physically step down from his seat on the board. If John left the room after recusing himself, that was his decision. And he's entitled to do that. And I'm, I'm not quite sure what was meant by, board members are recusing themselves generally if they're on more than one board. I, I wasn't sure what that meant. So I'm not quite sure what the concern is. I, the concern was that John apparently, on one hand, voted to support the project before the board, he was supposed to be impartially voting about the project on. And it made sense to recuse himself. That was the right course of action. His decision not to stay in the meeting was his choice entirely, and it is his choice to make. If other people, and I don't care if they are recused members of a board or commission or a general member of the public are not properly behaving before a board or giving it the board a hard time, that's really a different issue from whether or not the recused person has to leave the room or not. That's a question of what is acceptable behavior by any individual in a public meeting. And that's, that's what I said, and that was my position on that. Any questions or concerns, comments?
Does anybody have any questions about the situation with the planning board and the ZBA?
So, so Mike, I guess, do we want to clarify policy? I mean, that's the under, underlying, and we've got the, go ahead, Cindy.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't mean to cut you off if you want to finish first, but a policy, I, I don't know that the select board has the authority to make a policy for all of the boards. And I don't know that there is, that it would be acceptable for any or all boards to have a policy about what an individual decides to do in their individual capacity. Some of them may recuse themselves.
I guess that, that, I mean, maybe it's a recommendation, Cindy, but my point would be this is individuals had recused themselves, that is, I mean, they should do the right thing. Once they do that as a citizen, where I was gonna say, we can't tell them what to do and not to do. And I think that's sort of a recommendation to town boards and communities, saying, we think this is a common sense approach. All of you can either adopt it or not adopt it, but that way we're at least addressing the correspondence and the ask of the individual. And we're not, you know what I mean? I, I just think it's, it's, to me, it's like common sense. I'm not sure what the, each committee's got to govern it. If it's a, if it's a messy meeting, if I start to talk up, Mike should pull out the gavel and, and call the, the meeting to order and control the discussion, facilitate it. But, you know, if somebody wants to recuse, recuses themselves and wants to participate as their, as a citizen, they should be allowed to. I'm not sure what the issue is.
Yeah. My, my thought, my, my thought is simply that, you know, there's, there's the mass law that governs that Cindy just went over, and also the reason that we make everybody, or I think it's the law, that everybody has to, uh, take and submit that they have, uh, completed the ethics training on a periodic basis, so that every two or three years. That is, the, the whole idea about ethics and recusing yourself is covered within that. Uh, and the policy that we have is we don't reappoint people if they haven't completed it uh, on the periodic basis, the way that the, uh, the town clerk has, has laid out from the law. So that's, that's, I don't think there's any other policy needed, or, or we can even require anything beyond that. But I defer to the town council if I'm wrong. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, I just, one thing I think we should do is I think, I, if we can, I think we should take this off Kim's plate. So I'm not, can't sure Kim should be the, you know, the person that this person, I mean, as provide a response, so take Kim out of the loop. It's not her place to necessarily respond in my mind.
You mean to, um, to this particular letter?
Yeah, I mean, she's, she's, she's fielding it on behalf of the board, but let's kind of remove Kim from the discussion. That's all.
Yeah, she, she forwarded it to, she did forward to town council, and Cindy, I think you responded to the, yeah, so it's already, yeah. So I, I agree with that. That's what she did, was she gave it to town council and town council responded. So. Right, again, can you, Cindy, can you just, um, explain the, the role of what you're, what you're doing here with, uh, special counsel?
Sure, it's common in development, particularly large-scale development projects, um, where the developer really has the financial upper hand and can hire a whole slew of experts and totally destroy municipal resources trying to defend or to try to understand the project. So they often will have special consultants or spec, in this case, special counsel, often special engineers. It could be a traffic engineer, a civil engineer, whatever the project requires. And the developer often pays for that because the whole point of it is to level the playing grounds. So a developer on a big complicated project can't come in and essentially paper the town to death and use all their other resources or other budget or something unique to their project. Um, and this is sanctioned throughout the commonwealth. It's common. They do it all the time with engineers. And the developer agrees, the town hires who they want for special counsel or for peer review, and the costs are billed to the town because the town is the client, and the client passes those costs on to the developer who has agreed that that they will bear that cost of the town as the person they need to help review a project so they can fairly and fully evaluate it. In this case, um, not only would it take too much of the town's legal budget to really get into it, but I happen to be a land use specialist. I'm hired to do that by other cities and towns, and I'm hired to do that by my towns, by other boards, um, when I'm general counsel, so that the general legal budget isn't, um, basically swallowed by the time I would be spending on a detailed review of a particular project on behalf of the town. And that's really all it is. You know, it would, didn't have to be me, it could have been anybody. But just because I happen to be town council and it happens to my, be my area of expertise, should not mean that the town can't use me. And that's, it's as simple as that. Just like they use, and I forget his name with all due respect, is that Mr. Gray, or Gray Consulting, that they often use, um, in planning board matters or ZBA matters. And he is the retained consultant, I believe, on this project hired and paid, hired by the town, but the costs are borne by the applicant.
All right, thanks. Does anyone, any, any other member of the board have a question about, uh, about either of these issues we just talked about? All right, well, Cindy, thank you for explaining that.
Welcome.
Let's move on to number five, which is considered an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Uxbridge and Millville for a shared planner position. And it just so happens I see that our current, uh, planner, Jack Hunter is on, as well as Kim. I, I, I know you, you all should have in your packet, you should have received an email um, that actually has a copy of the actual, copy of the actual intermunicipal agreement. It's, uh, five pages long, and it starts right at the top of towns of Mendon, Millville, and Uxbridge intermunicipal contract agreement for shared town planning services. So maybe, Kim, can you start and just walk us through this?
So I know you all have heard me mention and talk about this many times before in the past because we have been actually dealing with this particular grant and this contract for about two and a half years now. Um, the original proposal years back in the IMA that this board originally signed and the one that Millville and Uxbridge signed was for one position that was going to be shared between the three communities. Um, before we were able to hire that position and basically not able to find a person, full-time person for that position that fit the, the parameters, we applied for a regionalization and efficiency grant through the state in which we proposed a program in which we would hire a full-time junior planner, basically someone with a few years of experience under their belt, and have them mentored by a part-time senior planner, as you see featured here, um, in order to basically get a, a better leg up on working in communities and really understanding the complexities that some kind come with, you know, working in different towns and different boards and sort of have, rather than having them start with, without the back, well, without the experience, they have someone that they can learn from for a couple of years. So this agreement, um, took us about six months to, well, six months to a year now to find the correct candidate that, for the junior planner position. Obviously, we already have the senior planner in position, and he's been here for this past year. But our original IMA did not reflect the language of the grant award that we wrote because that was for a position and a half essentially. And so all three towns needed to update the IMA in order to recognize both positions. Um, the parameters are the same, oh, sorry, watch his love. The parameters are the same. There's a range in which we would hire a position to share, you know, depending on, um, the benefits cost and those sorts of things. There's a little bit of room in between. Um, the position itself is housed in Uxbridge. Both positions will be housed in Uxbridge, and we just pay our share per year towards Uxbridge. Um, the plan would be to start this new agreement, um, in January, and it would run to the end of this fiscal year and then for one more year in this model. So anything, at up to this point, um, the planning has been based in Mendon, which was also not part of the original agreement. So the other two communities will reimburse us for our share of the costs that have been up until this point. And then we'll kick over and start paying Uxbridge towards the share in January. Questions?
Hey. Jack, do you have anything you'd like to say? Jack Hunter, who is our current planner?
Hi, all.
Hi all, um, I guess the only thing I can say is that when I was first hired, you know, everyone knows I'm, was retired. And I can only do this part-time, and it's quite the job, and I'm actually enjoying it. I'm enjoying working for Menden and Uxbridge and Millville. Uh, my, one of my first tasks was trying to find a full-time planner to take over for me. And I advertised three separate times with different angles on the, on the, uh, job description. And unfortunately, um, we couldn't find anyone with any experience, really, a couple. Long shots, but we tried and I've used every angle I could, then our next step. Was to see if we could find an intern, a graduate student who would, wouldn't mind being trained on a part-time basis, very part-time. And then when he or she graduated, they'd almost have a guaranteed job. And we went, reached out to the colleges I went to, as well as the human resource person in Menden went to. Um, and nothing, uh, just, just no takers. And I talked to some of my colleagues and, um, it, it's a tight market. Planners aren't moving like they used to move, maybe they are now a little bit. And, uh, to be frank, we weren't paying enough to get someone with a lot of experience, so. This is, I guess, Plan C, I don't know about that, but. That's all I can say.
Do any board members have any questions?
Well, if not, I was, sorry, just, Kim and Jack, what's the, I mean, what's the likelihood of success for Plan C, given the? Uh, update Jack you just gave?
It's great. We have a candidate that we, that all three towns interviewed this week. Who, um, we've agreed upon, that's, so, was sort of the delay in the paperwork was also, um. I mean, I don't want, Millville needed to cut down their share a little bit, um, based upon cost, and so we had to sort of tweak it a little bit. But the candidate that we have, we actually are all in support of, we think she's going to be excellent, um. Really has a lot of detail, um, experience, has a background in permitting software, which is the software that we use. Um, has a background in creating design systems, you know, which is something that we need, um, for planning for the town, and then can also. Streamline, you know, our bylaws and review, so our practices are the same in Millville as they are in Menden, as they are in Uxbridge, so. I'm, I'm excited, I think she's, she's gonna be good.
I, I, I ditto to what, uh, Kim said, Mike, uh. I wouldn't want to let her on her own, she doesn't have municipal experience. But she know, it's interesting, she's been working, I think she is like vice president or something of this software company. That does permit tracking, so she knows the language. She knows the language and the requirements of special permits, of site plan review, of variances. Et cetera, et cetera. She doesn't have that hands-on, feet-on-the-ground experience. Which hopefully I can offer her and, you know, I only do so much, I'm probably eight hours. In Menden a week, it seems like fifteen, and, uh. There's a lot of projects that she can do to help you there.
Yeah, so, so Mike, two, a couple more questions if I may.
Just hang, hang on a second, I just, Brendan has had his hand up for a while, let him go first and.
Sure, and something that Jackie just said, uh, is basically my question, so with the change from being headquartered in. Basically Menden and being paid by Menden too. Any changes in the number of hours you're working or expected to work?
Yeah, I believe the way it's written, I actually get an extra hour in Menden and an extra hour in Uxbridge. Because Millville can't, can't afford me, can't use me, I don't know. I'll let Kim, I haven't been, I haven't been involved in those discussions. But I do get an extra hour.
So, and we will now have this additional person for a guaranteed of at least, I think it's. Six hours the day of a planning meeting and attendance at those meetings. Um, for, for us, and then I've already spoken to them, which is sort of an aside about, um. Combining the ZBA admin piece and the zoning enforcement piece. To be all within one position for this person coming on, so that they basically can get cross-trained to learn all of these things at once and perform the tasks. So we can, you know, maybe see some continuity there.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, Kim, yeah, that last comment caught my ear, because I was wondering if there are any synergies with the position we. Talked about earlier, the Affordable Housing Coordinator and some of the functions at that position described, but. It sound like you also see some synergies with getting this resource, uh, more involved with some of the administrative functions. Within the town?
Well, specifically for ZBA, so, so the ZBA, uh, needs an admin and we need a zoning enforcement. Person, those positions are both have been vacant, and I think there's an opportunity here, so even though that some of the work might be more. Clerical in nature than what we were hoping for the position itself. I think because they are learning anyway, there's a value in having them actually start there, take on those tasks. Um, you know, get a handle on it, especially while we have Jack here still. And, you know, start there and see what we can sort of streamline.
Okay. Um, and my, my last question, you mentioned reimbursement, what kind of reimbursement would we be expecting?
So each, we already received a seventy-five thousand dollar grant from the state, which essentially paid for the entire full year of the program. So I, you know, doing a projection over, I'm anticipating, you know, I won't say because Jack will cringe, but like. I, I see the cost for this program, this next couple of years being, you know. Our share of it being somewhere, you know, in the forty, I have a breakdown in there, but you know, we will have spent. You know, less than twenty-three thousand dollars for two years worth of planning services based upon that grant that we received, which is really incredible. Um, and, but going forward for the next two years, there's going to be a significant bump. Because we are going to take on these two, but eventually that will drop down. Because we are trying to get to one position that is shared, right, that has all the skills in that position. I mean, I don't say, is that a, would be in a significantly lower price point, because their years of experience are less. Right, Jack is an expert and this person is starting out, and so there'll be some savings there. But in the next two years, it is a bit, it's a little bit of a bump, um, I had anticipated, um, the first year of this anyway. Because we were already in this IMA, and so I had put at least, um, half of what I thought the costs were in our planning budget already. Um, and then we have an article on the STM, because we have two things that we're actually looking for. Um, and we'll get to that when we talk about the articles, that are, it's that article and the amount is not just for this, it's for two grants that we got.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, there's no other questions, I'd be looking for a motion to, uh, to support this, uh, IMA for shared town planning.
I move to sign the IMA for Shared Town Planning Services with Menden, Millville and Uxbridge.
Motion's been made, Baywani, is there a second?
Can I have a second?
Right, and roll call vote for all those in favor, Marali, aye?
Tini, oh, aye.
Rugo, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Right, thanks very much, everybody.
Still stuck with us, Jack, can't leave yet.
Thank you, Jack.
Can't leave, I guess. Thank you.
And thanks for doing this, seriously, it's a really, it's a testament to you to come back and mentor a person like this to the benefit of us, so. Appreciate it.
Hey, so, uh, so number six, what I'm hoping to do is, is wrap up this, uh, appointment to the, to the Conservation Commission tonight. We had interviewed previously, uh, both, uh, us and the Concom had interviewed. Uh, Tim Icardi and Bob Sweet for the two positions that, uh. One, one was, uh, was the one that, uh, Tim would have been reappointed to, um. Back in, back in July, for July one, and then we have one, uh, a two, two years left. On a turn that somebody, uh, resigned, which had expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Also, uh, John D'Amelio had been interviewed, uh, by the, uh, Concom. I believe, but I think he's in attendance now, uh. John D'Amelio, are you, um, are you here? And unmuted?
Yes, I'm here, I just can't seem to get any video, so.
Okay, well, can you just, um, explain to us why you want to be in that? Now, you're on the ZBA right now, right?
Yes, I was an alternate, and, um, when Van de Sloth, uh, recused himself, I became the commissioner.
Um, well, I think, I, I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, I don't think he, he hasn't resigned from the ZBA, right?
He, no, recused.
Right, so, so you're still an alternate, but you, but you filled in at the last meeting, right?
Well, yeah.
Last ZBA meeting?
Yes.
So let's talk about, uh, why, why do you want to be on Concom?
Just because I love the town of Menden, I've been here for over twenty-five years. Uh, I have almost. Probably have over twenty-five years in the construction industry, I'm a construction supervisor. I've been on, you know, built, you know, over a hundred houses, probably been on hundreds of site developments. And, uh, I think, um, the knowledge I have is beneficial to, you know, the town of Menden.
Okay, do, do any of the members, uh, have any questions for, for John D'Amelio? Go ahead, Mike, Mike Goddard.
Hey, John.
Hey, Mike.
So Mike asked the standard question I ask, why? So I can't ask that question, but I did have an additional question, just, I mean, and I, I don't think, um. Uh, Tim is here, but might want to ask this of Bob as well, but. Given the whole discussion on recusals that we've had on this meeting, my question, John and, and Bob, I would ask you of this at some point too, when we're done here is. Do you have business that would come before this committee?
Yeah, I was asked that question on the interview, uh, at the police station.
Yep.
You know, in person when I was there, I've been on the, um, water commission. I've been on, I did a, uh, term on the planning board. Um, I think. In, in, in all the time, you know, on the town boards, I think I refused myself once. Now I am in construction, I am a Realtor, you know, but. You know, I'm sure some things will come up sometimes, but I can't predict that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Alright, so we have, uh, two openings, uh, for the Concom, and we have three people, uh. Tim Icardi, who had served, uh, on the board previously and was, would, hadn't been reappointed yet, and there's also Bob Sweet. And now John D'Amelio, so we have three people for those two spots. So I guess let's start with the, uh. With the shortest one, the, the one that would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, do we have a motion to appoint? Uh, one of these three gentlemen to that spot?
And Mike Goddard has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because if, in the interest of fairness, since I asked John that extra question. I was wondering if I could ask Bob and, and if anyone, if Tim, Tim's not here, I don't think, but I'd want to ask Tim as well, because I think the recusal thing. Is top of mind for me, so I'd be kind of curious of, of all the candidates. Do they all, would they all have business coming before this committee, or as John said, infrequent at best? You know what I mean, so I'll, Bob, if you could answer that question for me?
Yeah, no problem, Mike, um. Now, everything that I have in front of the committees has already been, uh, approved and, and dealt with, so. I'm building a house that I'm finishing up, but other than that. Um, um, the reason why I want to be on the board is because I don't have any business. dealings in the town, and therefore I won't have to refuse myself on, on any of the projects that come in front of the board.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Alright, and I, I would say that I do have an email here from, from Carl from back in, uh. Back in September, and it says, for recommendation, um. Says, uh, we're confident that either John or Bob will be a positive contribution to the Conservation Commission. And that was back in September, but that was, um, before, um, Tim Icardi had sent his, his, uh. Email saying that he wanted to be reappointed, and he explained when he spoke to us a couple of weeks ago that he never got the email and. Said he didn't realize that he needed to, to tell us that he wanted to be reappointed, so. Uh, with that being said, does anybody want to make a motion for this, uh?
Elena has her hand up, Mike.
Go ahead, Elena, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I, I would like to make a motion.
Sure.
Um, I move to appoint Bob Sweet to the Conservation Commission for a term that will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Right, is there a second?
A second.
Alright, so we have a motion made and seconded, so we'll take, uh, a, a roll call vote for that. Marali, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Rugo, aye.
Alright.
Tini, oh, no.
Okay. And Brendan, did you, I'm sorry, did you vote?
Chanel, aye.
Okay. So, so Bob Sweet, you've been appointed to the, uh. To the term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? You have your hand up, you have something you'd like to say, sir?
I just wanted to say thank you to the board, and, uh, one of the questions I, I have is. Uh, when will this start? Will it start immediately, or is this something that needs to, uh. Be put into effect at a later date?
As soon as you go to the town clerk and get sworn in. Um, you will be a member of the Concom, so I would do that, uh, in the morning if she's, if she's there. And congratulations.
Thank you all.
Alright, and we have, uh, another appointment, the, the second.
I think Town Hall is closed tomorrow for the Veterans Day holiday.
Yep, you're right.
So, probably not till next week, Bob.
You, you could send Ellen an email and she could make arrangements to give you an appointment to come in. Alright, I don't see anybody else's hand up, so, um, I guess I'm looking for, uh, a motion for the. Second position that would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I move to appoint Tim Icardi to the Conservation Commission for a term that will expire June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
You muted, Mike. Everybody's muted.
A second.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded to appoint Tim Icardi, um, to the. Actually, the position that he was originally in, that he's essentially being reappointed to, to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So, um. Roll call vote, Marali, aye?
Tini, oh, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Alright. So that's unanimous, so we have Bob Sweet and then, uh, Tim Icardi. Alright. So that's number, and anybody have any questions? Congratulations to Tim, although he's not on the, not on the call. Let's move on to number seven. Which is, uh, considered chapter ninety reimbursement for Blackstone Street. I know, we have, while we have the highway surveyor there, um, Alan, do you want to just, just talk about this, either you or Kim? Just to explain it for everybody else, in case anyone doesn't understand what this is about?
That, this is Alan, the, um, that's just reimbursement for money that was spent, uh, this past summer to resurface. Um, portions of Blackstone Street, which makes that street pretty complete. As far as being. Pretty smooth.
Okay, okay, um, I guess I'd be looking for, does anybody have any questions, first of all? Alright, then I guess I'd be looking for a motion, uh, to approve the chapter ninety reimbursement as written on the motion sheet.
I move to approve chapter ninety reimbursement request in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand, five hundred forty, four dollars, forty-eight cents for work on Blackstone Street from Wesley Drive to Pole Thirty-Eight. Pole Thirty-Eight to Blackstone Town Line.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second.
Alright, Brendan, so. Lonnie made it, Brendan seconded it, all those in favor, Marali, aye?
Tini, oh, aye.
Rugo, aye.
Goddard, aye.
No, aye.
Alright, thank you all very much. For number eight, um, you see there's a discussion about, um. For number eight, um, you see there's a discussion about um, consider an appointment of a highway mechanic, equipment, heavy equipment operator. Um, this is a uh, well, it's, let's let Kim walk us through this, because there's been some discussions.
Sure, I, so I had sent the board an email late last week detailing um, the unusual nature of this appointment. Um, we're lucky to have a candidate um, return who was a previous long-term employee of the town. And so in order to have the board consider um, whether they would like to reinstate his time and start him at a higher rate within the contract and give him the benefits that come with crediting him for years of service, you would need to make a motion in which you recognize that rate of pay um, and those additional benefits. Um, I think I pointed out before in that email that um, you know, there's a significant difference between the starting rate for this position and what we are offering the candidate. However, this is the amount that the candidate would be, would still be receiving had they stayed with the town. So it's not in addition, um, there's no additional benefit being offered beyond the board considering um, crediting their years of service and putting them back to their status with the town.
So basically, we put him back to where he was before he left. Is that right?
Correct. Well, back to where he was, plus the additional colas that we awarded and the, the extra cola that the board awarded at the end of the last fiscal year.
Right, in other words, I, I misspoke, just like, like as he had never left. So he would have, if he had stayed, he would have gotten all of those other, which is competitive, which is the reason we gave it. And Elena, you had your hand up first?
Maybe I missed this, but um, when, when did he work for the town before and when did he leave?
Uh, he was with the town for almost 17 years and he just left this past May.
Okay, so just, just a few months ago. Okay, thank you.
And then we just have a position, we had a position recently become vacant, and he expressed his interest in returning.
Thank you.
Mike Goddard?
Yeah, so um, in, in, this is not uncommon from, for where I used to work, to be honest. People would come, come back to and, and start where they left off, so uh, I'm just kind of curious, Kim, have we done this with any other positions or candidates, or is this going to be the first time and, you know, are we um, prepared to set a precedent here?
We have considered and allowed full-time employees in the past to have their service credited back, particularly within the public safety departments. We have also considered credit for part-time service years in which we have not allowed that to credit towards their years of service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So would somebody be willing to make a motion to uh, reinstate Michael Canoyer?
I move to appoint reinstate former employee Michael Canoyer to the full-time position of highway mechanic, heavy equipment operator at a starting rate of pay of $27.24 per hour. Credit four years of service, sorry, credit for the years of service, 16 years, 10 months, 2.5% longevity, five weeks of vacation time and one year probation.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
I think Elena beat you, Mike. Alright, we'll take a roll call vote, Morally, aye?
Video, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Alright, well, congratulations to uh, to Mike Canoyer for coming back. So uh, let's.
Mike, real quick, it's uh, since uh, Kevin Rudden showed up. I'm sorry, uh, he came in about in the middle of things. I didn't know if you wanted to um,
Oh.
circle back to the uh, the uh, the law that we had passed for the uh, senior abatement.
Sure, absolutely. Is he, is he on the call or is he there in the room? Ah.
He's physically here.
I see. Well, I kind of see, it's kind of far away, but um, hi Kevin, please um, thank you for, for working with Elena on this, and uh, you didn't get us to, you know, Brian Murray was, was bragging about you a little bit the other night. We did, we did have uh, you know, our 100th uh, Eagle Scout from Troop One Mendon. Absolutely. He mentioned, he mentioned uh, you and Elena, and had, I read the email that he had sent in September about, I know it was a long time coming. Um, but please uh, fill us in on, on uh, on your details.
First, I apologize that your, your meeting began at 6:30, so I didn't show up until then, but um, if you recall, at the 2021 annual town meeting, um, the voters of Mendon unanimously passed a request for the legislature to pass an enabling act and um, uh, to let us create this, and just about 16 months later, Governor Baker signed off on it. And uh, the Board of Assessors will be implementing it beginning in the spring um, of 2023 for fiscal '24. There was not enough time to implement it for this year. Uh, basically, uh, the means tested property tax exemption is designed to help senior citizens cope with the rising property values and property tax bills, uh, especially during COVID when values have been climbing um, dramatically over the last three and four years. Uh, not just in Mendon, not just in the state, but across the whole country. Um, if phenomenal means, the words mean tested shouldn't scare anybody away. Um, to apply for any existing exemption, you have to meet certain uh, criteria such as age, ownership, income, length of residence, et cetera. That's the means test. Um, this does not replace any existing senior exemptions. It's an additional one that piggybacks on the state's very popular senior circuit breaker income tax credit. And the reason why I'm glad you let me speak is I'd like to alert that anybody over the age of 65, when they are doing their 2022 state income taxes next spring, please s- fill out Schedule CB for Circuit Breaker, and if you qualify to get that, you qualify to get this local exemption. Uh, basically, the state has criteria for it. Um, the income for a uh, a married couple filing a joint return, the limit this current year is $93,000, which is substantially higher than the poverty level um, the existing exemptions have. Uh, the other, other factors uh, related to it specifically for us are um, you have to have lived in the town for 10 consecutive years, so we can't have people just move in and try to get it. Um, in very simple steps to apply, beginning next spring. One is fill out that Schedule CB. Um, even if a senior does not make enough income to fill out an income tax form, they should fill out the Schedule CB and send it in anyway, because the state will certify that they would, would have been eligible and in fact may send them a check. But uh, that's way of qualifying. The assessors will have a very simple one-page to one and a half-page form available. Uh, we'll be publicizing the date in the spring. Uh, you'd, you'd apply by the deadline. The assessors would check the eligibility, just like any other exemption. Um, at some point in September or October, the Board of Assessors would have one additional meeting with your board um, beyond what they normally have. And that is for, for, we would uh, elaborate what the cost of the program is. Um, and your board would decide whether you're going to offer on a sliding scale of 50 to 200% of that state credit. And just to give you a range of where that is, um, had the program been in place right now, the credit for this year, uh, the maximum is $1,170. So that 50 to 200% scale is giving somebody between $585 and $2,340 exemption from taxes. Um, then at the annual classification hearing, the assessors would explain to you exactly how that cost. And that is then spread across the residential tax rate. So it is an additional cost to all the residential taxpayers, which is something different. In the towns that have implemented it, the average cost for the average taxpayer is about $50 a year to pay for it. And then finally, uh, at every three-year point from instituting it, uh, annual town meeting voters get to decide whether to keep the exemption for another three years and get rid of it. And that's basically giving the people, uh, the voters a say every, every three years on whether they like the exemption or they, they find it onerous and, and get a chance to get rid of it. So the, the next time that would happen, um, uh, since it just got passed would be uh, the town meeting of 2025, if I'm not mistaken. So we would actually have it in place for two years, and then the voters would uh, would decide whether they want to keep it. Um, for you guys, it's basically one extra meeting a year. For the assessors, it's one extra calculation when you're doing the tax rate. Um, and the idea is to get it. I'm sorry?
Why would we have one extra meeting?
Because you need to decide the percentage prior to the, uh, Lonnie, prior to that classification hearing, so we can build it into the rate and come back and tell you what it is. It could conceivably be done by email, but your board needs to vote. So um, what we'd do is come in and say, you know, X number of people qualify. The total cost of the participants is, let's just pick a number and say it's $30,000 this year. Um, if they get maximum, and you would decide, do you want to do that at 50%? Whatever percent, 89% to 200%? A lot of the smaller towns are starting in 50% to see where it goes and get the taxpayers used to it. Um, so at 50%, you'd be saying, okay, if it was in place this year and somebody gets the maximum, you'd be giving those eligible people $585 off their tax bill.
Or so if we went 100, 100%, we could, they could essentially get a thousand?
Thousand 170 or 200%, 2,340. It is compared to the $400 and $1,000 existing exemptions. It's really meaningful when people are having tax bills in the six, $7,000 range now. They're also still eligible to earn the other exemptions. So if you're getting $1,000 now, you don't lose the eligibility. It's quite conceivable that somebody, if you gave them 100%, they would then get 2170 off their tax bill, and they could still go in the senior work program. It's really designed to build on those. Um, and it's designed to give what, what we've been calling meaningful tax relief. Because, quite honestly, the exemption limits were set back in the 1960s when maybe somebody's property bill in Mendon was maxing out at a thousand or 1,500, and getting $400 was a good deal then. Candidly, you know, getting $1,000 may seem like a lot, but if you're living on a fixed income and your tax bill is now $7,000 a year, which is not inconceivable, um, it's not really that meaningful, but getting a third of the bill knocked down would be. And in some cases, we're talking about letting people stay in their houses. Uh, we really are. So that was the purpose of this. And you know, I want to thank, as you did, Mr. Chairman, Representative Brian Murray spent 16 months sheltering it through it every step, but if you don't know, uh, he filed the bill. It goes to a hearing in the revenue, it went through a hearing in the Revenue Committee. He and I testified, it came out positive, and I believe Elena also sent in some information. It then went through um, three separate votes in the House, then went to the Senate, went through three separate votes in the Senate. So it's not a very, it's not a simple process where Brian files it and gets approved. And that's why it took 16 months, and the governor signed it. We're very happy. This is a result of the entire Taxation Aid Committee. Um, and look forward to uh, to implementing it with the Board of Assessors.
Alright, well, thanks very much. Thanks again, and good work to both of you.
And if I could just add one thing, Mr. Chairman, um, when Selectman Brugos joined your board, she resigned from the Taxation Aid Committee, and there is a vacancy. So I was hoping that uh, you might promote that anybody interested in joining that submit to you, so we can fill that vacancy.
Well, I'll ask the uh, the town clerk to, to put it on the website, but I think you just promote it better than anybody, anybody could. But uh, but we will. Elena, you have uh, something you'd like to say?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Kevin for um, putting so much work into researching this program as well as doing um, the legwork for getting it uh, to town meeting and to uh, keeping an eye on it through the legislature. So uh, thank you, Kevin, for all of your work on this.
Well, I, I'd just return the favor by saying, Elena, thanks to your idea of, of looking at this. The Mass Assessors Association statewide has submitted its own bill um, with the exact wording um, to make this a local option for every city and town, and that's um, winding its way through the legislative process as well, but we're trying to take the statewide, because the more we talk about it, the more every other town is saying, we need that. So um, I'm going to credit you, because you approached me about this four or five years ago. So, anyway, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, all you guys.
Alright, you're welcome.
It's great news.
Thanks, Lonnie, for realizing we're sitting here. Have a good night.
Yeah, I, I know this is supposed to be remote, but I think, but I just want to say, Lonnie, thanks for uh, for going in the town hall and, and helping out Alan and actually being, being the anchor there in the, in the town hall. Just make sure you don't lock anybody in when you leave, you know, because remember the water's not working.
Right.
Um, but okay, so if we can now move on to the, to the warrant, um, you know, there, we, we pared it down. There were 23 articles uh, on the uh, special town meeting warrant for uh, for next week, which um, which you can see, it's actually Monday night, uh, November 14th. And uh, we're going to go through uh, the first 14. Um, I know the first, the 13 of them are uh, select board articles, and then the 14th one is a CPA article we can talk about, but um, between, Kim, do you want to walk through these? You want me to walk through the spreadsheet? Uh, you can all look at the spreadsheet you sent.
I'll just go through it um, quickly. So the last time we met, there were a couple of um, financial details that weren't yet finalized. We weren't sure about funding sources or some of the dollar amounts that um, some of these articles were going to be. Since that time, and I sent you an updated, an update last week, we have um, certified free cash at 165,818 and excess levy at $130,000. Um, the FinCom met on Monday night and reviewed uh, the amounts in the warrant. They did not take any action on that time, because they wanted to wait until they had a full um, committee in order to um, to make recommendations, but they were in support in concept with what we were proposing um, for funding sources and amounts. So, why does it look like that on your screen?
I think you went too far over.
Scroll on over.
There it is.
Okay, so just quickly, I know we already went over these last time, so I'll just go over them again. Um, we have three bills of our prior year. You can see in the notes on the side, we have a public hearing bill, a plumbing training bill, and a Concom training bill. Um, those are one-time expenses um, not to reoccur, and so the recommendation there is free cash. Um, Article 2 is a combination of the additional colas that we gave at the end of last year, some additional overtime that is needed in both fire and police. Um, some cash outs um, from long-term employees um, leaving, and so their uh, benefits have a price, obviously, and some of these in particular were as high as $9,000 when they left, and so those amounts come directly out of their salary lines when they do leave, and so um, we have to um, replenish those accounts. This article also has, remember, call, we added the money for, two CDLs for the Highway Department here rather than in a separate article. So all of these, and it also includes just on the bottom, one variation for uh, for the Fire Chief salary, and there's another article that matches it at the bottom. Um, as a reminder, we are in an IMA with two, with Blackstone for the Fire Chief. Um, the Fire Chief is the town of Mendon's employee, so much like I was talking about earlier with the planning IMA. Uh, the difference here is we need to budget the entire amount in our salary line in order to pay bill, but we will get reimbursed from Blackstone for a portion of it, but we still need to budget the entire amount. And you will not see the revenue that comes in, in that line as an offset to an expenditure line, but And you will not see the revenue that comes in, in that line as an offset to an expenditure line, but it does offset. So this is the amount, both this twenty-four or five, and then the twenty thousand dollars below from dispatch was the transfer we had talked about with needing less for the grant that would cover that gap for that agreement. Weights and measures, fifteen hundred dollars, we talked about that. There's the transfer article for, for dispatch. Article five are the two planning grants I was talking about earlier. There are two. There's a master plan grant that matched that the planning board, um, applied for and received, which is twenty thousand dollars. I estimate, if we use the funding for, from planning and zoning, I estimate I need about another thirty thousand dollars or so to cover our expenditures related to our agreement. And so the amount that I need for the STM is about fifty-one thousand dollars and change. I put fifty-five there because again, there is a benefits piece because they will be, um, an employee of Oxbridge that I don't know the total max dollar amount. So it could go as high as fifty-five, I have fifty-one to fifty-five right now. But right now, I'm, I've fifty-one is my target, but I'll change it if I, once I get the confirmation. Article six, um, is the transfer from the three hundred fiftieth account into a new account that we will call community events that can be utilized more easily for future events like the Rock the Block Party. Article seven is for the town hall elevator ADA slash exit design that we had talked about earlier. Anticipate, anticipate, um, having this funded out of CPA. I happened to discussion with historic and with Ann about funding sources for this portion of it. The initial design piece to get, uh, initial schematics is five thousand dollars. The secondary piece for the architectural design is, is going to be closer to twenty-five thousand dollars. So this is funding for both of the first two steps of that process. Article nine, you had asked me to take a closer look at the actual expenditures within the tree warden's budget in order to make a recommendation about how much we should, um, give the new tree warden Ted Steves for his budget for this year. I, I did do that. I went back and I know I sent you the detail. I went back and looked at ten years worth of expenses, both within the tree warden's budget and then additional expenditures that were within the highway budget in order to get an average of cost over a number of years. Plus, um, the amount that we would need in order to reimburse for that initial invoice that came in in the beginning of the year. My recommendation for funding is thirty-one thousand three fifty. I believe Steve's, uh, actual request was thirty-five. So we're pretty close. And just as a reminder, um, as I told him when I met with him, if for some chance additional funding was needed, um, we do have, um, FinCom reserve available during an emergency. And we also can revisit once we get to May with year-end transfers if something were to occur, that couldn't be funded within this additional amount. Article ten, um, was a request for the reimbursement for the purchase of a power washer that was already purchased and, um, taken from the road machinery budget. Recommendation here, uh, was a request for ten thousand dollars. The actual invoice was eighty-one hundred dollars. After speaking with town council today, and maybe Alan can speak to it too. But the recommendation here would be to pass over this article because it was already purchased. And it not purchased through an expenditure at town meeting and there's still funding available within that budget. And so technically, there's not an action to actually take because the, the budget is still in the positive. It's not in deficit. Article eleven, uh, another article that was submitted, um, this one was submitted for ten thousand dollars. Actual invoicing and receipt amounts that I was able to obtain were closer to thirty-four hundred dollars. Was charged correctly to, um, the equipment maintenance line within the highway budget. So I'd already, uh, there is still nine thousand dollars available within my line. So my recommendation for this one is to pass this one over because there is still adequate funding within that line. And it was charged correctly for, that budget is for that purpose. Article twelve, um, I've been having a difficult time getting a handle on. I'm sure you've seen the many emails going back and forth. We initially were presented with an invoice for seventeen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and an invoice for five thousand dollars for work that was already completed at the beginning of this fiscal year. There seemed to be some complications with the, around the invoicing for this particular project in which it was, um, potentially funded in two different fiscal years or trying to sort that piece of it out. But, um, regardless, uh, my recommendation on this article would also be to pass over it because it is an article that should have either come to town meeting, already have been planned for, it'd be budgeted for. And in the same instance, um, there's still funding within these budgets in order to, they're not in deficit. And so there really is no action to be taken in order, you know, related to this expense. Article thirteen is a, was a ten thousand dollar request for a furnace replacement. Um, we have an invoice about ninety-nine hundred dollars. As you may recall, we've already talked about this, um, replacement at an earlier meeting in which we were presented with a slightly higher invoice. Recommendation here after speaking with council is that we should consider the replacement of the piece of equipment, but we should get three quotes, um, for the piece of equipment. And then fund the replacement once that process has been completed. Article fourteen.
So can I just, 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 so I'm clear, Kim? So for the, for article thirteen, you're suggesting that we, uh, transfer, uh, ninety-nine hundred out of free cash into this line item in the highway budget? Or?
So, no, what I, for any article like this, for, uh, when we buy a, a piece of equipment, one piece, one time, one piece of.
So special, so it's special.
It's a special article that could only, so that way it could only be utilized for that purpose when the thing is bought because that was the intention at town meeting. Obviously, um, circumstances do occur in which emergence, emergency purchasing can be made from budgets for things like this. But ideally, it should be avoided because we don't want to artificially inflate operating budgets. You know, it's, it just keeps the process cleaner.
So just for, for, uh, housekeeping, for article thirteen reads, transfer a sum of money to highway construction and maintenance for furnace replacement. Is that the language or you're saying it would be different language than that now?
No, we have to stick with the intent of whatever the language was that was printed on the warrant. And so we will just be careful to word the motion to make sure we, um, capture that language and intent, um, and, you know, place this where we need to in order to be able to keep track of it successfully.
Okay. And fourteen is the, Mike Goddard has his hand up.
Yeah, just in general, general question. So all the highway, I understand what you're doing with the highway articles. I think it makes sense. We might be running a little hot, but we'll deal with the, the operational budget later in the year if we need to. I think that's what I'm hearing, Kim. Is that fair? The question I would have, and it's just more for when, when we bring these to the floor, how does this differ than, than the, um, the tree warden ask? Which is asking for, I mean, there's two ways you could look at it. Either his account's depleted or he has money in his account and we might deal with it later, some of the highway. But the, it, it feels like the budget might have been under, uh, underfunded in this fiscal year. Is that fair where you're putting it? You're.
Yes, exactly. So, um, you know, it's difficult to gauge, um, particularly, so with the tree warden budget in particular, because we have, um, expended widely varying amounts over the last ten years for tree work based upon circumstances and the actual budgeted amount hasn't been changed. We budget the same amount every year, um, in that without any additional analysis. Just based upon the last couple of years, it would appear to me that our operating budget already is short. If we were to expand at the same rate that we have in previous years.
I'm, I'm good. And I just think when we, when we present these articles, I think we should make the distinction. And I think we, you know, truth in budgeting, Kim, right? You, we're, we're reevaluating that particular line item and they'll see it in this next fiscal year. Maybe look a little different because we're, you're adjusting, right? And the highway stuff makes sense to me. If, if there's not a need to fund it right now because it's, he still has funding to get us, you know, into spring. We, we revisit it. I think it makes a lot of sense.
And we can, we'll cover exactly what you're talking about during the discussion after we make the motion. All right.
Article fourteen, um, I was looking at emails right before the meeting. I don't think we have a confirmed amount yet, um, on this. I, it's, it's, there's some chatter about a possible passover for this. CPC meets tomorrow night. There is a confirmation language in the emails about passing over article fifteen. And then article sixteen, I've just summarized as sports courts. That number is confirmed at twenty-four nine. And these funding sources for these were confirmed with Ann, um, just a few days ago.
All right, does anybody have any, uh, any discussion or questions about, uh, what we just covered? Go ahead, Mike.
Just, when, when, when this is all said and done, if we, we go forward, Kim, with the recommendations that you laid them out, what, have we expended all free cash, et cetera? So we net zero at the end of the day or do we have a balance?
So right now, without, um, without having made these adjustments to the highway lines, because those were also for some free cash, so figure, you know, twenty, plus twenty grand. We actually have, um, fifty thousand dollars available before that. So we're going to end up in the seventies. But I, I want to caution you, um, you might have also seen some of my correspondence about another article that should have been on this warrant, that was on this warrant, that we are going to need funding for. So FY twenty-one, um, the, the board considered, there were two articles on the warrant at the time for a trackless machine and a dump truck. And at that time, we didn't have the funding available because we had also bought another truck. And so an option was presented to explore, um, leasing the piece, the equipment together and then expending it over a number of years. The lease, the, once we got through the budget and we were in a situation, the board revisited it and supported that in August post-town meeting and decided to move forward with the lease agreement. The lease agreement in itself states that we will be making the payments from CapEx and we will need to do so, um, moving forward. And so that would require that we transfer money annually from CapEx in order to make that payment. The reason that I caution you about this additional money and free cash is because, because of the nature of what's occurred, which is that the payment's already been charged to an operating line. We are going to, now, in theory, we still are obligated because we signed documents that would pay this payment from CapEx and need to do so. So we need to pay the one we've already paid essentially. And then we also in May need to make plans to pay them one going forward. And so that, I mean, that's two fifty-six thousand dollar payments. And as you know, we only have a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in CapEx. So I just want to keep that in mind as we're saying that we have about fifty, sixty grand not spent in free cash that we definitely have a purpose that we need it for. We'd have to essentially have an article that moves the money from free cash into CapEx, right? And then we'd move the money out in, to, to our, one for this year and one for next year for both payments.
So, so my, my point would be just, we're leaving the balance in free cash. That's where I was going with my questions. We have a balance there. But I would probably say, if you look at our guidelines, we're looking to allocate our free cash a certain way to CapEx, to, you know, um, our, our rainy day fund, things like that. So I would assume that was what I was going to ask. Are we looking to do that again in the spring as you did this past year?
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to. Uh, I mean, for, and we're definitely going to have to pay more attention. We still, we have seven more years left on this lease agreement for this piece of equipment to the tune of fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. And there is not, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars in CapEx is not going to cover that lease agreement. So we are going to have to make a concerted effort to make sure that we dedicate free cash towards CapEx in order to continue to make these payments.
Right, so I mean, there's two things. One, you want to lift, we had an article to lift the cap on what we could put into CapEx, number one. So that could be a reason to do it. But number two, I also want to make sure we want to get back to the practice of funding these accounts from free cash, not as a secondary action, but almost as a primary when you start thinking about this special town meeting, how we've sort of, you know, gone through all these things, all needed, et cetera. But, you know, to your point, we get back to that fiscal, um, responsibility to fund these special accounts because we now have, um, requirements to fund from them. Does that make sense? So, I'm good, Mike. Thanks.
All right. Uh, we have a CJ, a guest that just had a question.
Yeah, actually, I'd just like to make comments. Coleman DeCone from Twenty-Seven Fulton Street. Hi, good evening. And, and I'd just like to, uh, commend, uh, Mike Goddard. And if that's the approach that the board and the town is taking, uh, differently, I guess, or, or I should say recently with respect to using a CapEx, uh, account and a planned approach to that, I think the town would be, uh, much more, uh, uh, amicable to seeing, you know, much more, uh, budgeting it, I guess, in that way. And, and, and I just want to commend the town for that and, and, and Mike and, and anybody else who's supporting that. I did, uh, send an email to the, um, Capital Expenditure Committee at one point in time in the last year to express my interest. I don't know if that's still a committee of sorts, but, uh, I'll just put that out there for, for the town to, to think about. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Coleman, if you want to, uh, Coleman, if you want to just, uh, find that and send that to me again, uh, that'd be great.
I will do that, Mike. Thanks. Thank you again.
Yeah, if you say, if you send it to the CapEx committee, I'm sure it went unnoticed because there's no committee.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Looks like, uh, there might be some possibility one in the future, so thanks.
Great. All right, I don't think we have anything else, although I will just, when it's to talk other topics, not reasonably anticipated. I, I, I probably should have put this in, uh, a lot of correspondence, but at, last week, while, while I had our, uh, our state rep and our state senator together, I spoke to both of them about a couple of, uh, grant requests. One of them was a two hundred thousand dollar grant request, uh, that Kim was filing for, um, the, the second year of this regional, uh, fire chief grant. And a, a second one about, um, about thirty thousand dollars to look at our, uh, transition from, uh, an elected to, from an appointed to, uh, from an elected to an appointed highway surveyor. And, uh, both, both told me they would be supportive of the grant and they would also, uh, earmark money in the budget for next year, to, to fund both of those for the town because they thought they were great. And it's actually the kind of thing that, uh, you know, that they recommend that all towns do. So I just thought I would throw that out there, but, um.
And I'll, I'll just follow up by saying, I did submit both grants in the last two days. And, um, we should know within a month or so. And spoke to both the DLS today. It just happens to be a great coincidence that the two people that we're working with on the report that they're doing for the town are also the two key liaisons for this grant program. So I'm really optimistic that we, um, it's successful.
You'd almost think that was kind of planned, Kim, you know? But, and we are, and the report, um, from them, uh, is due by Thanksgiving. But, um, all right, if there's nothing else, I just look for a motion to adjourn.
I have one more item. Sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Lonnie.
Bob Foxon had emailed me this morning. Uh, I'm going to go grab the MyLars that they picked up. I guess we were supposed to sign them at the last meeting. I thought. I thought you guys had signed them, but I, obviously I wasn't here, so I couldn't sign it. Um, did you, did you sign them?
Yes. I, I believe I, there was one I had to sign. The rest of them, I signed them all and everybody signed them. And I thought we gave them to Laura, but, um.
Yeah, I thought I saw you guys signing. You said that they, when you picked them up, that they didn't have Selectman Sigerson. Let, let me check in on it. If, worst case, if they're not signed or for some reason something screwed up, I'll just reach out to you guys tomorrow. I'll go grab them and run them around. And if you guys could sign them, if we need to, I'll, I'll let you know though.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Yeah, bet Lonnie.
All right. Uh, so a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, everybody. All those in favor? 10 yeay. Roll yeay. All right, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Everyone, Monday at the meeting, special town meeting.
Special town meeting on Monday.
Yes, and Wednesday, two meetings next week.
Yeah, right. Cause we have Wednesday, the tax classification, right? Yeah. All right, everybody. Good night.
Bye.
Good night. Bye.